At approximately six thirty-five. Commissioners, there were no notice for the February fifteenth meetings. They'll be, we'll be voting on them at the next meeting. Under old business, there's none. Under new business, this is a special exception application for twenty-one thirty-one North Front Street, which is Zone RF. It's filed by Gulraz Sultan and Jane Berger with Maple Insurance Group. This is to establish a supportive housing facility use on-site. Oh, can you come over here to the microphone?
Hi, I'm neither Heim or Gulraz, but I am here on part of both of them. That's okay. My name is Tara Davis. So I'm not the direct applicant.
You'll get.
Oh, good.
Okay, so the applicants are proposing to establish a supportive housing facility use in the Riverfront zoning district. The proposal requires ZHB approval with special exception for the proposed use per Section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code. Property at twenty-nine thirty-one North Front Street is a point three eight acre lot featuring a two-and-one-half-story fifty-two-hundred-and-forty-three-square-foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen twenty-six. Property is bounded by the property at twenty-nine thirty-three North Front Street to the north, the property at twenty-nine forty-four North Second Street to the east, property at twenty-nine twenty-nine North Front Street to the south, and North Front Street to the west. Detached structure features elements of the Tudor Revival architectural style. Character-defining features include the asymmetrical facade, the variegated stone treatment on the first level with half timbers infilled with stucco in the upper levels, the variety of ornate entrances around the building envelope, the substantial wooden brackets below the second-floor overhang, the large metal fire escape on the rear elevation, the steeply gabled roof with modellions throughout, the substantial dormers on the side and rear roofs, and the substantial brick chimney on the front elevation. Main entrance features a Gothic-arched wooden door with a small pane set in a recessed stone surround. It is accessed by a small brick path to the front street sidewalk. There are three other entrances on the side and rear elevations. The two on the northern elevation feature three-quarter view divided-light wooden doors set beneath divided-light transoms or flanked by divided-light side lights. One is sheltered by a substantial awning with large brackets, and the other is recessed in a building alcove. Finestration throughout the property features divided-light steel casement windows. First-floor windows feature stone sills and soldier-course stone headers, while those on the upper floors are set within simple wooden frames. There are five large dormers with simple penements in the roof above the garage at the rear of the building. Structure is topped with steep gable roofs, which are clad in wide slate shingles. Newer additions on the side and rear feature flat rubber roofs. The front yard features minimal landscaping with a brick walkway running through a well-maintained lawn and a freestanding sign advertising the existing business. Rear yard primarily features a surface parking lot with a small yard accommodating a fire pit and decorative lighting. With few minor modifications, the building retains most of the original appearance and most, if not all, of its architectural and historic integrity. Structure is a rare example of Tudor architecture in the city and is indicative of the diversity of older residential structures along Front Street and throughout the neighborhood, and thus makes a significant contribution to the architectural and historic character of the community. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be denied for the following reasons. The applicants have provided no justification or support for the proposal beyond the limited information provided in the application and business synopsis, and specifically, they have not outlined why the existing conforming office use could not be continued or new such use could not be established. They have not provided any information on the operator of the facility, their credentials, or the number of residents that will be on-site, and they have not demonstrated how the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And the applicants have not engaged with the surrounding community, have not provided contact information in their notification letters to allow the surrounding neighbors to engage with them regarding the project. Previous proposals for similar uses in the neighborhood were not acted upon until there was significant outreach to surrounding residents.
Thank you, staff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Yes, my name is Tara Davis. I am from Marysville, Pennsylvania. Do you need my full address particularly?
Well, you stated you're from out of state, so.
No, I'm a local. Mr. Heim Berger is from New York, and he is the direct applicant, so as his lawyer, Melissa Kelso, who's not here tonight. I am a local representative, just having started this process with him as the listing agent on the property for Mr. Gulraz Sultan. So having met Heim, who is interested in purchasing the building but would need this special use exception, I've remained involved as the local party.
Okay, well, you heard the staff report. They have denied the.
I heard.
And could you state why we shouldn't deny it?
I should say why you shouldn't deny it? First of all, I wasn't aware that, I was under the impression, according to the application process, that we would have the chance to come and discuss why the application should be or should not be approved. So I don't know where that information came from. Who was that that denied it?
No, there was just a recommendation for denial in the case report. No decision has been made, and no decision will be made until the zoning hearing board meeting.
Great, okay. So the recommendation came from what office or who?
The planning.
Zoning board, planning board, okay. So that's just for me to be able to understand and take back that information after this evening. The special application was submitted. There are reasons for the need to be, the use, the zoning use to be changed, just in this case. It's still going to be maintained as the business use, but with, of course, the difference of having some residential stays. It is a supportive housing in the sense that it's used for patients who are coming and staying more than short-term with staff on-site. So it is a staffed, actual business that would be needed. Nothing in the building would be changed, as you heard the beautiful description, by the way, which is probably better than my listing description, to be honest. It's gorgeous. The historic value of all of that in that description, nothing's going to be changed inside. There was no need for that. That's hence why the building and the location was perfect for the use for Mr. Berger from New York. He does have other established properties in Tri-County area, so Cumberland, we're working on Perry as well. The need for a Harrisburg location was because of the growth factor. He's housed over two-hundred-and-sixty-six clients from within the Tri-County space just this year alone, and his opportunity has been growing exponentially to house more clients that have come to stay after their recovery, and outpatient services have stopped in hospital or an outpatient, and ending up, they need a place to stay, right? They need a place to go and start over and get reestablished in the community. So why should it be approved? I mean, I think there's multiple reasons within the application itself. I don't hear that any one specific reason was denied, or.
Well, the reasons for denial were essentially a lack of information that was presented. For example, there's no information provided on the number of residents that would be on-site at any one time. There was no information provided about who the operator even is, much less their background, and any certifications or licenses they may have at the federal, state, or county level.
Okay, so I do have business information with me. I'm happy to provide and send as much more of that as requested. I didn't know until this moment that that was a request or a need. That's not stated clearly in pre-application or application. So knowing that, I can send a lot of that information in if needed. For the zoning hearing board, I would say that this clinically managed, low-intensity type of program in the area is important because of an obvious case of growing mental health crises in the area, and obviously how many people we've been able to house in this area so far. Now, that being said, this is a well-established company that has been doing this, again, in Tri-County for years, happy to send that additional information. It does have a software-backed program involved where it's highly, the patients are locked in, the clients are locked into having check-ins, having lots of coming-and-going rules, house rules, regular meetings. The staff has certain check-ins with them daily, weekly. You know, it's not a house. It's a place where they have a regular commune of organized efforts put in place to maintain a structured business for their mental well-being as they move forward in their outpatient growth, right? So happy to provide more information. I'm not sure what exactly you might want.
Okay. Usually, if you have to provide the information, it should go to Jeff. And when you come here, we're not going to look at that. You need to send that to him.
Jeffrey, right.
My one concern is, it states you have not contacted anyone in the community or the neighbors?
We did. I have the certified letters that were sent out two months ago, actually.
No, they, I mean, they said that they did provide the notification letters, but they explicitly noted in their application that they had not done any engagement with the community outside of those letters. And I know that when this, a similar type of use, not the same resident group, was reviewed at a recent meeting, the Planning Commission continued the case until the following month's meeting so that they could engage with the surrounding community to discuss any, you know, questions they might have, concerns they might have regarding the proposed use.
So these letters that went out certified, there was, is there supposed to be an additional community engagement that's required in order to get through to the zoning board hearing?
So in the.
What would you recommend?
So in the application, in the special exception, various special exception application, the introductory pages, it does explicitly say that applicants should engage the community because it will assist in going through this process. It will help the community know what's being proposed because we do post these things both on the property itself, as well as on the city's website and in the local newspaper. And it basically allows the community to have an opportunity to ask questions before this meeting so that this meeting is not the first time surrounding neighbors may be hearing about a particular use or finding out about a particular project.
Okay, so just to be clear, the letters that were sent out on January third was ample enough, except for the fact that we would have wanted to do like walkabouts, postings on doors, like.
Well, I believe the, I believe the letters also have the wrong dates because they have the February dates and not the March dates. They, I think maybe the letters were sent out anticipating that the submission would have been made in time for the February meetings, but it was not. So it didn't get into the Planning Bureau until the February deadline for the March meeting.
Right, I think there was a little bit of a, there was some email communication back and forth that I did see that there was some delays between offices and gathering and capturing some of the application process and submitted documents, right? So I think there was definitely some, like, hey, we thought we were going to make that February third meeting, and then we're told that we couldn't. Something was wrong with the application or something, right?
I'm gonna stop this.
Okay.
This should be taken care of before. We're not doing this now.
Yeah, I was under the impression that everything had been taken care of. Clearly, this is what we were under the impression we needed to do in order to get here.
Okay. Basically, what I'm looking at right now is, I'm going to move to deny it and also recommend to continue this when you have all the papers here.
Can I have a clear, concise amount of information needed to come back outside of this?
You have to contact.
Because that's, I think that's half the balance, right?
That's actually right in the application instructions. I actually revised them recently to be much more clear and comprehensive about what is necessary because we do get questions about what type of documentation would help, and so I wanted that to be clear upfront to applicants. So that is in the application document.
I'll make sure Melissa Kelso understands that.
Yeah, I want you to contact him, not continue this with us.
Sure, yeah.
So I'm just saying, as a commissioner, I'm gonna, that's my recommendation, but I'm gonna hear from the other commissioners. Commissioner McKenzie.
I could support a continuance for more information or an outright denial, but I don't think we can vote tonight.
Great.
Commissioner Ochoa.
No, I agree. We either deny it or continue it. It seems to be, the application seems to be inadequate.
Commissioner Reid.
And I agree as well, same reasons.
Commissioner Mark.
Yep, also in agreement.
Okay.
Commissioner Jordan.
Same, in agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public for against this project? And I'll go to my left, middle, and to my right. Okay. If you do, come to the microphone and state your name and your address.
I guess I'd.
No, you can stay there. You can stay there.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Eric Beitel, B-E-I-T-T-E-L. I live around the corner at one-twenty-five Manor Street, and I own a home there with my wife. We didn't receive any notification whatsoever, and I'm really puzzled and questioned what type of facility this is. Mental health was mentioned, I believe, in one of the letters. Substance abuse was mentioned. I don't know if it's for both, one or the other. There are similar facilities, I think they're similar, in the area that have a lot of outdoor activity, which I think would be detrimental to the values of the homes around. So I'd be greatly concerned about that. But I thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address this board. My name is Dave Shankwiler. I live at twenty-nine twenty-one North Front Street. We are two doors away from this structure. And I'm here, you know, I don't want to be the guy that says, "Not in my backyard," but I don't think this is compatible with the neighborhood. This neighborhood has, the neighbors in this neighborhood have invested well over a million dollars in the structures in that neighborhood. Most of the homes in the neighborhood average a hundred years of age or between eighty and a hundred years of age. It's a very good neighborhood. It's a tight neighborhood, and I just don't think it's compatible. As Eric said, we've already got two of these facilities in our neighborhood. We have one on the corner of Green and Division, and then we have one in the twenty-eight-hundred block of North Front Street. Both of those facilities, as Eric said, have a lot of outdoor activity early in the morning till late at night. I happen to know the one on North Front in the twenty-eight-hundred block. My son actually rented the property next to them, and it was not a good situation with the outdoor activity, with the smoking and other activities that happened. So it's not a good track record. I think having two in our neighborhood is plenty, and we shouldn't go further. The other piece of it is, two doors away from this facility is the Alex Grass Center for Jewish Life on the former academic center. They have a lot of children's activities there. They have a lot of outdoor activities, a lot of senior citizen activities. I don't think this is conducive. If you look at this property with the clients they would be serving, I would think they need amenities. We're not close to a bus route. We're not close to shopping areas and any of that type of thing. So it's just not a good neighborhood to put that. Our properties are well-maintained in the neighborhood. We've spent a lot of money to upgrade those. I know my wife and I, we took a property that was going to be condemned and put it back together again. And that's the same story for a number of those properties in our area. I'm familiar with the exterior and interior of this property. It's not well-maintained by the current owner. For me to hear that I've been inside the property, for me to hear that there's going to be no changes to the interior, how do you do that? It was a commercial property before, before the current owners. It's now a commercial property. How do you put residential inside without major work to be done as far as bathroom facilities, shower facilities, and bedrooms? But that being said, it's, we're trying to take a neighborhood and put it back to residential, and we're trying to keep it a neighborhood, a community, and I don't think this is compatible to that. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a quick question? Just on the regard of the.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You had your shot.
Well, he's mentioned the inside condition, and I don't think that was fair. I just wanted to make sure that we, okay, okay.
This is why we always ask for community involvement.
Absolutely.
This is why we want the neighborhood to be aware. And then maybe you could get together and make some, you know, decisions on that. But to come here and not, you know, talk to any of them, that's just not what we look for.
Absolutely understood.
Because I'm gonna go for the motion. Commissioners, could I get a motion on this?
I would like to move to deny this application, primarily on the basis that the information that was submitted is not following the instructions that were provided with the application process. It's lacking a lot of pertinent and important information for us, the Planning Bureau, to make any sort of good-faith decision on this. It also appears that the actual applicants named are not present and also apparently did not participate in the preparation of this application. Did it not provide information? And also because there has been zero community outreach of the neighbors.
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been moved to second to deny this application, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
What am I to tell Melissa Kelso to do next? Contact you?
Yeah, I will follow up with her.
That'd be great. She'll want to hear that.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary final land development plan application for five-five-five South Twenty-Fifth Street. This is Zone INS Institutional. It's filed by James Skinner with the Commonwealth Charter Academy Charter School. It's to demolish a portion of the existing building on-site and redevelop the property as a school with a larger building footprint and expand its site and access improvements.
So the applicant is proposing to demolish a portion of the existing school building on-site and redevelop the property as a school with larger building footprint, expanded site, and access improvements. I would note that I did have a discussion with one of the applicants prior to the meeting here, and it seems that there's like a bit of a miscommunication about what is actually being proposed for the site. It is a school, but it's not like a school, there won't be schoolchildren there. So I think that speaks to, I think, our recommendation of the continuance, but I'll get to that in just a second. I just wanted to clarify that while we had said it was a school, in follow-up conversations, it appears that that's not kind of the case. So, but I think the applicant will maybe be able to discuss that a little bit more. The property at five-fifty-five South Twenty-Fifth Street is a nine-point-five-five acre lot featuring a two-story thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-seven-square-foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-nine. The property is bounded by the property at twenty-nine thirty-three North Front Street to the north, the property at twenty-nine forty-four North Second Street to the east. Property, oh, I was actually wrong, so, sorry about that. That's what you caught, Jamie. Apologies. This detached structure features elements of the International Architectural Style. Character-defining features include the significant building setback from the main street, the asymmetrical layout, the brick facade, the expansive entrance portico, the decorative murals and religious iconography around the building envelope, and the large congregation hall near the front entrance. There are three main entrances along the front elevation. The primary entrance beneath the portico features three full-view metal doors within a yellow metal surround, flanked by decorative side lights and topped with a pentagonal transom. It is accessed by a wide concrete walkway. There's a second set of full-view metal doors flanked by side lights and topped with transoms, and a similar set of full-view metal doors flanked by large side lights providing access to an assembly area at the southern end of the building. Finestration is varied throughout the building. It primarily features narrow casement windows on the front elevation with plate glass and double-hung windows on the side elevations. The main structure is topped with a flat rubber roof, while the assembly hall is topped with a gabled roof featuring asphalt shingles. The grounds largely feature a maintained grass lawn with rows of mature trees on the northern and southern boundaries and a copse of mature trees in the front between the access drives. There is a metal backstop in the northwestern corner of the site indicating the former presence of a ball field at this location. Property appears to retain most of its original appearance and architectural integrity. It differs significantly from the residential neighborhood to the west and south and more closely resembles the large commercial and institutional properties to the east. Thus, it makes little contribution to the architectural character of the community. Thus, it makes little contribution to the architectural character of the community. Planning Bureau staff recommends that the request be continued for the following reasons. While the Bureau is generally supportive of the overall project, there are some aspects that require further review and consideration, including a traffic impact study will likely be, will likely be required as the project will exceed the city's threshold of forty trips per peak hour. The applicant should consider relocating the proposed two-way vehicular access point into a single two-way entrance and exit located at the intersection with Berry Hill Street to simplify traffic flow, clarify vehicular and pedestrian movements, and improve safety for all users. And I just wanted to note that did get the city engineers' review today, and that was provided to the planning commissioners at your lecterns there. And that has notes, and that has notes on the proposed site plan to the effect of consolidating the driveway access points. The applicant must install an ADA-compliant sidewalk on the entire South Twenty-Fifth Street front edge of the property, connecting with the existing sidewalk at the southern end of the site. Additionally, there do not appear to be any pedestrian infrastructure into the site from the public right-of-way, implying that anyone arriving on foot will need to share drive aisles with vehicles and tractor-trailers. The applicant will not be permitted to install eight-foot-high fences, as such fences are not permitted by right in the INS District per Section seven-dash-three-oh-seven-point-nine-E of the zoning code. There do not appear to be any outdoor players for schoolchildren, although again, per our follow-up discussion, it does not appear that there will be any on-site. The applicant has not indicated where the required bike parking will be located on-site. And the Planning Bureau has engaged the city arborsum project review so that landscape and tree retention best practices can be incorporated into the new design and to ensure that native plants and pollinator plants are being incorporated into the project as outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. And then finally, the Planning Bureau recommends the applicant engage the surrounding community to identify changes that would help the site better integrate into the community, identify opportunities to enhance the utility of the site, and ensure that its future use does not retain the same concerns and problems of the current configuration. And again, some of that was based on the presumption that there would be schoolchildren here on site. Obviously, that does not sound like it's going to be the case. But again, the applicants, I think, will probably provide a little bit more background to that. But as with any project, and especially in this particular context of this neighborhood, we feel that public engagement may be necessary. The property is kind of located on one of the few dead-end streets here in the city, so traffic circulation is not quite the same as it would be with the regular street grid, and especially with the introduction of tractor-trailer traffic. We thought it might be necessary to engage the community to understand how that might impact traffic circulation, safety of all users, and maybe just, you know, noise or congestion issues that the community may, may have about the project. So with that being said, our recommendation is a continuance so that we can further meet with the applicants, and especially with the city engineer, to discuss some of the access issues surrounding the proposal.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names and relationship and address?
My name is Jim Skinner. I'm the Director of Facilities for Commonwealth Charter Academy. I live in Lingelstown, Pennsylvania.
Jared Hockenberry, I'm with ARM Group, forty-six-hundred, sweet, two-oh-one. Lena Drive, Mechanicsburg, I'm the civil engineer for the project.
And could you speak into the microphone?
Just to, just to make sure we're picking up.
Do I need to say what I do? Jared Hockenberry, with ARM Group, at the forty-six-hundred Lena Drive in Mechanicsburg, and I'm the civil engineer for the project.
I'm Robert Rulo, I'm with Sigma Seven Design Group. We're the architects and engineers for the tech services part of the building, which is the north part of the building. Offices are in ten East Forty-second Street, Forty-first Street, New York, D.C.
I'm Deana Snyder with Strata Architecture. I am the architect on the existing portion of the building to remain. I am located at six-eleven William Penn Place, Pittsburgh, PA.
Okay. You, gentlemen and one lady, heard the report and, and the items for the continuation. So maybe you want to fill us in a little more on your project?
Sure, I can do that. As was mentioned, we're, we are a cyber charter school, which explains the fact that there won't be students arriving on buses, things like that, at the, at the building. We're currently at One Innovation Way in Harrisburg, right at the hack entrance, is where our, our main building is now. Just to give you a little bit of background, that building is almost full. We've grown since COVID, and, which has, basically, as we've added students, we've added teachers. We require our teachers and staff to come into a building and work, we kind of look like an office. When this property became available as, as a school, we're considered a school, we're a Pennsylvania public school. The location was great, the zoning is great for us as a school, and we saw it as an opportunity to be able to expand and have more room for, for more staff. So, some of the things that were mentioned, you know, sidewalks, no problem. With those, with the suggestions there, we're happy to accommodate. We won't see students walking, you know, from the neighborhood up to the building, but we can, we can certainly, if there's a safety issue and things like that, we're happy to do those kinds of things to, to integrate into the community. But it will, it will really look like adults driving in, working, staying for the day, working. In a, in a general sense, if you were standing out on the street trying to figure out what was going on there. Again, you won't see any school buses pulling up out front.
Okay. The same question I had for the last one, did you contact the community about your project?
We, we did not, no. We've, we, again, maybe assumed incorrectly, because we're a school and it was a school. We assumed that we would be okay to go into that area. If we need to talk to the local people, we can certainly do that.
Yes, I would highly recommend it. You never know, they don't know what kind of school it is, they, you know, they should be aware of exactly what you're putting in there. So, you know, it could have been a school that, you know, had all kinds of people there, so. I highly recommend you do that.
We can do that.
Commissioners, that's my only question I had so, at this time. And if you have any concerns or questions, and I'll start with Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Do I understand this is a complete relocation of what you have at the Farm Show, or is this an augmentation?
No, we're, we're hoping to move a couple different departments, that we've just ran, run out of space.
Because this seemed like it was a downsizing, that's why it was
No, no.
From what you had up there.
Yeah, we'll be able to hire more people this way.
Okay, no neon, no glowing stuff along the top of it?
Not in that neighborhood, no.
How many, how many teachers, I mean, in cyber settings, when we've done them, you know, it could be a hundred and fifty square foot per teacher, relatively small setting, so you could have a lot of people in there?
I think right now, because of the departments that we're moving there, it will be a lot of our IT people, and it will be some of the, the media side of the school.
So not really the instruction?
Not, there will be some instructors there, but the vast majority no. I mean, I think our parking footprint might have been in the seventy, but we think maybe there might only be fifty people in the building at the most.
Okay, no other question?
Commissioner O'Toole. Commissioner Reed.
No questions.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the existing Commonwealth Charter Academy location. I got to tour it back when it opened. So I, I understand conceptually, like, this, the way you function and the setup and everything for this. So I, I'm following what this site would be set up as too. Curious, though, if you could just clarify and explain more the, the intent of having two separate entrances, one being for trucks? And the mention of tractor-trailer trucks being at this site, so what's going on there? Why would we need a separate truck entrance?
So you, we won't be seeing tractor-trailers there on a regular basis, but it's part of the section of the building. Obviously, we're heavy tech users, so there's, there's going to be some servers and things in there which will arrive via tractor-trailer. And then, you know, obviously, we expect UPS, FedEx, Amazon to go back.
Well, they're on my street too.
Yep. So, but we want to make, we wanted to make sure we had the, the, the correct curvature and, and ability to get back in and out of there for a large delivery. But we won't be, like, we won't be looking at like a warehouse situation or anything like that.
Okay, okay. So the possibility of, you know, based on the engineer, city engineers' comments and, and planning comments, the possibility of adjusting how the current ingress egress configuration is and everything, are you amenable to adjusting that?
If that's what it takes, absolutely.
Revising everything?
Yeah.
It seems like the traffic study condition would go away, given the change of now understanding the use better?
I, I would imagine so, I'm not sure what their shifts are like, but, you know, when we were operating under the assumption this was a school, and it looks like a school, I think when you look at it, and because it previously been a school, I think you imagine forty, fifty teachers getting there at six-thirty in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning. So I would imagine that the traffic is much more spread out over a day for something like this. They probably do not trigger that threshold.
We do, we flex, we flex, that people can kind of come and go as they need to.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any other questions, thanks.
Commissioner George?
No further questions, Commissioner Merrick addressed.
Is there anyone from the public who are against this project? And I'll start one on my left, and center, and there's no one in the left, my right. Commissioners, can I get a motion on this? Okay, yeah, Commissioner.
I don't have an issue with your concept there, but I just, I think the one thing that would be nice is to get some income tax, real estate tax-paying partners. I assume you guys are nonprofit, based on your thing with the state. So from the city's standpoint, it's not development that creates anything for us, so.
We do have a pilot program with the city already. We do a payment in lieu of taxes.
You do? Okay, would that be extended to this site?
It, it certainly could be. I want to say it's in the neighborhood of seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars a year that we pay to the city.
Okay. What triggers that, or what triggered that? Was that an offer made, or?
We do that, and we're, we're all over the state. We know we're using emergency services.
That's where I'm coming from, yeah.
Absolutely, we know that we, we need the police to come, we need the ambulance to come, fire trucks. So we do that in several locations around Pennsylvania.
Commissioner, I guess I'm, my question for you is
I also have a follow-up question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is primarily for Jeff. The outdoor play area for children would also disappear.
Well, unless their staff want to use that. Climbing walls and whatnot in some of these places, so.
Before we vote, again, I think with the circumstances being as they are, do we want to go for continuous, or do we, are we okay with, with the changes, with the changes from the people? I guess that's a big question.
Yeah, I think we answered probably the technical questions relative to traffic studies, which would be a no-go if we didn't have that information and we had generation, because we have to have a consistent approach to all. I guess the key question is looking at the nature of that neighborhood, the distance of the building, what's directly surrounding it? I guess the Salvation Army is behind, diagonally up, I guess. It is a one-way street, there's not a lot of traffic, but I know the thrust that some of the commissioners have had to try and make sure that there's been more of an outreach to the community. And we've, you just listened to that on the last one, you know, the, that we've tried to do.
Well, that's the other thing, can we add the conditions of meeting with the, if we pass it, meet with the community, have them, so letting them know what they really are there for?
How would we structure that, Jeff?
I'm not really sure, I mean, with, with respect to whatever action the commission may take, you know, I think, frankly, I would like to almost have an opportunity to re-review it too in light of the different operation of the property. I mean, it may, maybe this is an office use, it's not even a school. I kind of want to go back and look and see what, how we reviewed their proposed, the property at One Innovation Way. I believe that was in maybe twenty fifteen or, or so, around there. So that would have been reviewed under our current zoning code, and would like to see that, because that may dictate how much parking is necessary, or, or, you know, just the specifics of it, I think, could, you know, having that be reviewed, I think, would be a benefit to the overall project, as opposed to kind of approving it and putting it out there and just saying, okay, we'll do some stuff before you get to city council. I think having it be a cleaner, a cleaner package that goes to city council will ultimately benefit, you know, the applicants as well as the community.
With that, could I get a motion from commissioners?
Motion to continue?
Is there a second on the motion? Moved and second to continue this project, continuation, all those in favor state by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. For continuation.
I will say you guys have quite a stable designers, so looking forward to seeing how this will turn out, respective of quality.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, this is preliminary final land development plan application for the Harrisburg Parks and Recreation Facility for the properties at ten-oh-seven and ten-twenty-one North Cameron Street, and eleven-oh-five Hur Street, and eleven-oh-five Hur Street rear, and ten-oh-two North Twelfth Street, which is Zone IND Industrial, it's filed by Richard Farr with Susquehanna Regional Transportation Agency. This is to consolidate the subject properties and construct a new city parks maintenance facility on site.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to consolidate the subject properties and construct a new city parks maintenance facility on site. And that includes the properties at one-thousand-two North Twelfth Street, eleven-oh-five Hur Street, one-thousand-seven and ten-twenty-one North Cameron Street, and an unaddressed parcel in the middle of the block. The existing nearby facility at nine-oh-one North Second Street, which is kind of at the back, right at the base of the hill below the Harrisburg Cemetery, will be demolished as part of a larger project redeveloping the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority's operations and maintenance facility at nine-oh-one North Cameron Street, which will include the vacation of public rights of way and consolidation of lots in the block to the south. The project site is comprised of five parcels, one-thousand-two North Twelfth Street, which is two-point-oh-one acres, eleven-oh-five Hur Street, which is point-six acres, one-thousand-seven North Cameron Street, point-three-four acres, ten-twenty-one North Cameron Street, point-two-five acres, and then an, and an unaddressed parcel of point-zero-seven acres, totaling three-point-two-seven acres, which features two buildings and a canopy from a former gas station. The largest partial, the largest parcel features a one-story eighteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-four square foot industrial structure constructed in nineteen sixty. The property has a limited history of mercantile permits, but appears to have primarily accommodated auto-oriented uses on site. The second largest parcel, eleven-oh-five Hur Street, features a one-story twenty-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot structure constructed in nineteen sixty. Property has operated primarily as a restaurant since at least nineteen ninety, first as less than tiny cocktail. Property has operated primarily as a restaurant since at least nineteen ninety, first as less than tiny cocktail, then as Regos, and later as Four Aces Bar and Grill. Parcel's fronting Cameron Street previously accommodated a gas station as evidenced by the remaining canopy, though there are no records of mercantile permits for the properties and Google Streets View confirms there was no business operating on site as of September two thousand seven. Uh, the project site is bounded by Hur Street to the north, North Twelfth Street to the east, the property at nine oh one North Cameron Street to the south, and Cameron Street to the west. Um, and to provide a little actual background, because commissioners may be wondering why, um, SRTA is building a facility for, uh, uh, the city. So as noted, this is a, and the applicant will be able to provide a little bit more background, but, uh, this is a multi-phase, uh, project in really the block bounded by the cemetery, Hur Street, Cameron Street, and State Street. Um, and it's, um, you know, multi-phase and it requires, uh, kind of stepped, uh, development of demolition and construction and demolition and construction. Um, so they're going to be, I think they're taking the lead on this because they're overall the developer for the whole block. Um, and they'll be building the proposed parks and rec facility that's being discussed today uh, so that they can then demo, uh, the other parks and rec, the existing parks and rec facility, uh, which is just south of Sunshine Park, uh, and then, um, all of the buildings that are part of that Goodwill campus, uh, right there. And then there'll be, uh, vacated rights of way, consolidating those blocks, and then constructing a new operations and maintenance facility before then demolating the, demol- demolishing the existing, um, uh, bus garage uh, that, uh, SRTA has been operating, I think, since like the nineteen thirties or something, in some capacity or another.
The old trolley barn.
Yeah. Uh, so, um, so that's why, you know, they're, uh, be, taking the lead on this because it's the first stage of this bigger, larger, multi-year, uh, uh, project. And so when we're reviewing this, we're just reviewing, uh, the, um, current proposal for the, uh, new, uh, buildings on site, but it would be helpful to keep that whole thing in mind that this is going to be step one of a three or four-phase, uh, project. Uh, with that being said, uh, the Planning Bureau staff is recommending the request be approved with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant, uh, must secure approval of a letter of map provision from FEMA so that the development can proceed as proposed and must eventually receive approval for both the structural demolitions on site as well as the proposed new construction. Uh, and the project team, um, has submitted, uh, the LOMAR to FEMA and is, um, I've recently seen some back and forth with FEMA requesting some additional, um, information, I believe. Uh, and so I'm assuming they'll be, uh, working with them to clarify, uh, the, that additional information needs and, and provide any additional documentation. Uh, but they are in the midst of that process, uh, currently. But they do need FEMA approval for that before, uh, they can go forward as proposed. Uh, the applicant should coordinate with the city arborist to increase the ecological impact and tree canopy on site by incorporating native tree species and pollinator plants, particularly on the western edge of the site around the stormwater detention infrastructure, which can also address localized air pollution created by Cameron Street and Hur Street infrastructure. Um, so, you know, having a buffer of trees, um, you know, would help address some of, again, the local, uh, air quality issues as well as, uh, kind of beautify the site, uh, for anybody traveling, um, on those, on Hur Street or Cameron Street. And then finally, uh, if possible, the Planning Bureau recommends removing the southernmost vehicular access point onto the site to remove a vehicular pedestrian conflict point, which is especially important given the proximity to Sunshine Por- Sunshine Park and to clarify, uh, vehicular circulation. I think we've had some discussions about this, uh, in the past in some of our meetings regarding this project. Uh, it may be the case that they need to have two separate ones just for, uh, the types of vehicles for staff and visitor access and then for city, um, vehicle access. But being that it's directly across from Sunshine Park, which will remain as part of, um, the future iteration, uh, of this block, um, we're trying to look to reduce vehicular, um, vehicular pedestrian conflict points where possible. Although I should note overall, um, there will be a reduction in that, uh, because they will be removing two curb cuts onto Hur Street, uh, as part of this project and reconstructing the sidewalk along there. So, um, you know, there, it's already consolidating some of the, uh, uh, vehicular access points. Um, but if possible, to simplify that into one, uh, would be preferable. Uh, but we would understand certainly if there are operational reasons why that cannot occur. Uh, the Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Uh, the project will, uh, expand and modernize the city's parks maintenance infrastructure, improving the ability of the Parks and Recreation Department to provide services to residents in a facility that creates better working conditions for staff. Uh, the project site is a conspicuous location at the intersection of two state routes and the removal of dilapidated and underutilized buildings and replacement of larger, of large expanses of impervious surface with vegetation and a modern city building will bring aesthetic improvements not only for passersby, but local residents and workers as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Bill Schnorr. I, uh, work with Stan Tech Consulting, uh, here representing SRTA as the applicant for this project. I'm out of the Mechanicsburg office. I believe that's.
Okay. Uh, you heard the staff report and are you acceptable of the conditions?
Yes, I read through it. I'm, I'm in agreement and I, uh, we are, uh, acceptable of the conditions of the recommended approval.
I hope everybody is like that. I have no questions at this time, except, uh, just one in, in the future, uh, but, um, future plans. Are they going to, uh, demolish the, um, Goodwill facilities?
Yes. One, one of the challenges with a facility like, uh, SRTA is that they need to remain operational during construction. And so once they start to build the main facility, it's probably like a two and a half year construction cycle. So they have to remain operational. So that's why they, uh, the main facility is really going to be in the area of the Goodwill buildings and, uh, while the existing facility remains operational.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the only question I had so far. Um, Commissioner McKenzie, any questions or concerns?
Yeah, first of all, I'm pleased to see something happening on that site because knowing the floodplain elevation, we did the building across the street cap a few many years ago and spent a great deal of time trying to figure out how to work with reverse flooding. And, uh, seven or eight foot above street level there was the, was the flood level. And you've got to be that high, it's got to be that high or higher for you. I assume this is going to be flood resistant as opposed to flood proof?
Uh, it is going, the first floor elevation of, uh, all structures on site are going to be, uh, a foot and a half above the, uh...
So you're, I didn't see any contours on here. I was trying to figure out how high that.
Yeah, above the base flood elevation.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, like, uh, Mr. Knight mentioned, the, um, there are current studies in process and, uh, that base flood elevation is going to be, uh, modified. And so our LOMAR that we have submitted, received our first set of comments, is to, uh, uh, to be able to design to that base flood elevation and then we will be.
Do you know what that elevation is? I'm just curious.
Three eighteen point nine.
Okay.
And, uh, so, yeah, we, the first floor elevations will be a foot and a half above that.
Okay, is that what, is that, was it eighteen inches or thirty inches we used to require?
Yeah, uh, our, uh, our free board requirement is eighteen inches, yeah.
Okay, okay. Never called that. Um, other than, I can't conceive of anything, I've watched that site for thirty years and it's never looked any good for, so, um, yeah.
Commissioner O'Toole?
Uh, not really questions. I, I agree with Vern. I've looked at that site for years. It's been so unproductive and glad to see, see that change and always glad to see something come to that corridor, so definitely in favor of this.
Commissioner Reed?
No questions.
Commissioner Murray?
I echo my commissioner's comments and any questions I had were already answered just through the additional information you guys provided, so thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public for against this project? And I'll start with my left. No one in the middle, no one to my right, so. Commissioners, um, this is almost straightforward, um, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and I'm trying to see if we had, we do have a few conditions listed here, one, two, and three.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second for approval with the conditions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you. You'll see me again. For the rest of it. Correct. Have a good evening.
This is, um, item number four. This is a zoning map amendment, uh, application for three twenty Riley Street, fifteen eleven North Third Street and fifteen thirty North Fourth Street, which is zone INS institutional. It's filed by Midtown Campus, LP, and Harris Logan LP. This is to change the parcel zoning designation to the commercial neighborhood zone.
Uh, yes, so the applicant is seeking an amendment to the official zoning map in order to change the parcels, uh, change the parcel zoning designations from the institutional zone to the commercial neighborhood zone. Uh, the request, um, footprint, uh, is comprised of, uh, three blocks. Uh, the project site, um, at three twenty Riley Street, uh, is comprised of a single parcel that was consolidated from twenty-two separate parcels and a small right-of-way totaling approximately one point zero one acres. The small right-of-way, the grocery's alley, was vacated in October twenty twenty. Uh, this site is currently in approximately one hundred and seventeen space accessory parking lot with minor landscaping improvements on the east, south, and west boundaries. Although the Planning Bureau notes that the lot appears to be sparsely used owing to the fact that spaces are reserved, um, or I guess were reserved for students and facility, and faculty of the Hack Midtown Campus. His footprint has shrunk dramatically in the past few years, resulting in less use. Uh, the northern boundary of the lot also features some landscaping and improvements related to the Boyd Street Urban Meadow. Project site is bounded by the Boyd Street Urban Meadow to the north, North Fourth Street to the east, Riley Street to the south, and Logan Street to the west. Uh, the block, uh, the property at fifteen eleven North Third Street, uh, is comprised of a single parcel totaling point five seven acres in size. The site is currently occupied by an accessory parking lot with minor landscaping improvements along the north and south property boundaries. The site is accessed by curb cuts along Riley Street and North Third Street. The site is bounded by the Boyd Street Urban Meadow and fifteen nineteen North Third Street to the north, Logan Street to the east, Riley Street and three hundred to three ten Riley Street to the south, and North Third Street to the west. And finally, uh, the block at fifteen thirty North Fourth Street is comprised of twelve different parcels and narrow rights-of-way, uh, totaling approximately one acre, although that was also, uh, consolidated. Uh, the site is currently occupied by an approximately fifty space accessory parking lot, bordering an unimproved gravel lot that is utilized as an informal parking and currently as a construction staging area, uh, for infrastructure along North Fourth Street. This site is bounded by Harris Street to the north, North Fourth Street to the east, the Boyd Street Urban Meadow to the south, and Logan Street to the west. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Uh, the proposals appear to have been given the current institutional designation, uh, by previous city staff in furtherance of planning projects at the time, most notably the Harrisburg Midtown Campus Master Plan, which was completed in April twen- two thousand and seven, uh, which proposed the establishment of a Hack Midtown Campus, a project that never completely materialized. As such, it is reasonable to evaluate the current zoning designation and consider amending it and consider whether amending it will help promote current development and long-range planning goals. Uh, the current INS zoning dis- designation has adversely impacted the city and community as it relied on a singular and outdated development model which failed to materialize, leaving large vacancies in the urban fabric and stymying potential redevelopment of the underutilized sites along the corridor. And finally, the subject properties are bracketed by CN Zone corridors to the east and North Sixth Street and west, uh, North Third Street, as well as further to the south, uh, at, along Verbeck Street. And thus, the uses and development permitted by the CN District will not be contrary to the character of the neighborhood and in fact will reflect the mixed use, the mixed-use nature of the surrounding community.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names and address in relationship to the project?
Uh, David Shuddy. I'm, uh, an attorney with Choutman Pepper Lock and we represent the applicant.
And I'm Doug Nydic. I'm with Greenworks Development. We are the applicant, uh, at fifteen hundred North Third in Harrisburg.
Okay. Um, I have no questions at this time, commissioners. And could start with Commissioner McKenzie, any concerns or questions?
Sure, I'm surprised it took you that long to get here to make this move. I mean, unfortunately, I think Jill and I were here when we went through the rezoning to try and get hacked downtown and there was a lot of potentiality there. Kind of disappointed that didn't happen, but that did appear in our comprehensive plan as something that needed to be addressed, so. I'm not surprised to see, to see that coming back and it also gives us an opportunity to put property on the tax rolls, uh, because we moved from an INS to, to a commercial type use, assuming whatever's developed. I see you had a couple of renderings from a couple of years ago that Alexander did.
Yep.
Is that what's proposed or just an example of what could happen there?
We've updated the, the initial rendering. I think you saw the one that had the inclined solar on the roof. We've updated from there to go to more of a flat roof and kind of changed the envelope a little bit, but it's basically a center courtyard, you know?
And it, are you, are you looking at market rate on that, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
With a little bit of commercial on, uh...
Like a podium building, kind of like the, kind of like a podium building, lower stories are commercial and office and then second floor and above?
Square feet of retail on Riley is all we're going to do, about twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, okay. Neighborhood support kind of things, okay.
Yep. Hopefully a restaurant that would service the residents as well as the community.
Okay, no, nothing more.
Commissioner O'Toole?
Yeah, the only thing worse than surface parking lot is underutilized surface parking lots, so I'm all in favor of this.
Commissioner Reed?
No questions.
Commissioner Murray?
Uh, yeah, I would echo, uh, both commissioners', um, very astute statements, Commissioner O'Toole. Uh, and, uh, I mean, I, I remember when you presented some plans. I think they needed a zoning, uh, variance and special exception. This was a few years ago. And what was the outcome of that decision?
Well, the his- the history of that was in, I believe it was, uh, twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
It was, uh, the special exception variants were approved with the two-year window to develop. And then, uh, in twenty twenty-four,
Yep.
uh, came back and the zoning hearing board denied the parking variance, but granted the special exception.
Oh, interesting.
Did that, they denied the special exception for the parking, the relief from the off-street parking?
The real off-street parking relief was denied.
Yeah.
So a portion of the project then reversed course.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it made the project impossible.
Yeah.
At this, at this scale.
Sure, sure, understandable. Um, yeah. This, this makes sense to me and, um, certainly a, a good way to start to revitalize, uh, this portion of the Midtown neighborhood, which we've been trying to do. Bring in more.
And connect.
Yeah, connect, revitalize, bring in more tax base, bring in more people, bring in more use, so.
All that. This project's going to be great for Midtown, great for the city.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan?
No questions, just more or less echoing fellow commissioners. It'll be nice to see something, anything there because it's just wide open, so.
So anyone from the public for against this project? And I'll start to my left. Okay, could you come to the microphone? And, um, state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is Matt Coleman, uh, nineteen thirty-two North Third Street. I guess my question is, like, the area around there being zoned for commercial, how far out is that going to expand? When he says beginning project, so how far out, I guess, that, uh, commercial zoning will end up going, uh, from a period of time? And I guess currently now, wh- what, what are the borders for the current zoning? Is it just those, that twenty-one point whatever acre or is it, um, is it going? Does changing the zoning expand out more for that area?
If we want one of you to answer that, I'll put this guy.
This is the map of, uh, what's inside the red is what's currently institutional, be rezoned to commercial, uh, neighborhood and this area, these areas are already zoned to commercial neighborhood.
So the expansion is not going to, like, take up?
No, no.
They go down, like, so this is the cutoff for Riley?
Yeah, yeah.
Harris Street.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's just these, these two blocks and this portion of the block.
Okay.
I know, like, in changing, like, one zone, then they come back and say, well, this was zoned before and this, so we can continue to go, to grow the area. I mean, I know that you want certain, certain things to grow, but then when you start changing the different zones and different things come in and different buildings go down, sort of thing, so that, that was my...
It's just these vacant parking areas.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Yeah. And there's no one in the middle and no one to the right. The commissioners, um...
Jeff, I'd like one more question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just, I, I just want to build on your last...
Just, I just want to build on your last comment there, and I'm not sure it's cleared everybody, is that you're still maintaining evangelical press as institutional zoning? The old Hudson Building, or no, it was Hudson, I forget what it was, the...
The old bank building, yeah.
Right, right. That's being maintained as it is. And then the, I think it was the Hudson Building where they used hack, are they still using that?
Hack's still using the mid, what they call the Midtown One building.
Yeah, yeah, that's still being used. So there's still, there's, that was the one, I think Hudson's one. I'm thinking it was in the back corner, like, right here of the parcel.
Yep, exactly.
I don't have the right name for it, but it had been an auto. It had the ramp and all the goodies in it, as I recall. So you're not stripping out this move completely, you know, institutional uses or educational potentialities? Just reflecting the reality and, quite honestly, having housing there could...
And the highest and best use for those couple of lots is what we're trying to do.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Just to let you know, that wasn't the Hudson Building. That was Hudson Building, that six and a quarter. I think that's like a TWA or some kind of, before all this...
AMP's first headquarters.
Right. AMP, that's what it was, yep. That's what it was, yeah. With that, commissioners, could I get a motion?
No conditions.
There's no conditions.
Moving to second for approval with no condition. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Jeff, there any other questions?
Nothing that I can think of off the top of my head. So I think you'll, trying to think, there are a few cases for next month, but because this month's meetings were kind of a little earlier in the month, I should be able to hopefully get the meeting minutes done for you guys so you'll be able to be caught up at the April meeting with all the minutes and everything.
Any update on the market?
So I don't know if anybody saw or attended. There was a meeting, I want to say, last Thursday?
Thursday.
And, yeah, there was, I think it was an hour, hour and a half or so at the historic Harrisburg Association building. It's, they, I think, outlined a bit more of the public engagement process that will be going forward, provided some dates that had occurred over the last month, year and a half, at which, you know, some mile posts where they were getting a project team selected and some initial engagement with the vendors, for example. So I believe in that meeting, the mayor did, you know, outline that the priority is first and foremost the brick building and getting that reconstructed on effectively the same footprint and effectively the same way. I don't know if they know exactly what all the details of the building will be, but it'll essentially have the same fenestration pattern, the same types of windows. It'll be brick, and then it'll have obviously some modern system MEP upgrades, ADA, stuff like that, a little bit more seating in it. And then the second phase, I believe, will be the stone building and modernizing that, bringing, again, the MEP, the mechanical electrical plumbing up to code and ADA. And then finally, a new life for the plaza, whatever that is. And the goal, I believe, is to have all the systems below the plaza. And so that might be a part of, you know, whatever new structure sits on top of it that's clearly years and many millions of dollars, you know, down the road. So I think there's a lot, a lot less certainty about what that looks like and when that happens. But the priority is reconstructing the brick building and then bringing the stone building up to code.
Okay. Anything for the good of the water, commissioners? If not, we give a motion to adjourn.
Jeff, you're the first applicant. That's not the same group, the twenty-eight hundred block.
You're thinking of the most recent one where they had the youth aging out of foster care. That is not the same group, no. Yeah. Yeah. I kind of feel like maybe they pulled her out of the bullpen and she wasn't warmed up, you know? But...
They threw her under the bus.
Yeah. No. I think she's either the realtor for... I mean, I would imagine at this meeting, yes, because it's recommendatory, but they probably not at the zoning hearing board meeting.
You're right, I mean, everything is very literally...
I updated it specifically for that reason because, yeah. So, and I mean, it's pretty laid out and, you know, to include your contact information in the letters so that people can reach out to you, which were not included in the letters. So, you know, we'll see what they come back with, or maybe what further communication results. But, you know, yeah, it was definitely a bit of a short on details.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's making it nice.
I know.
Yeah, I was trying to give her all the chances. She doesn't even know what she's, she doesn't even know what she's talking about, so... Yeah, like, could you tell me what it is again?
I'll move to adjourn. I know we...
Is there a second? I heard a second somewhere.
Who seconded? Who was that? Someone to claim it?